Do you have a generator?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, so you're fine. It's just the internet that's driving you crazy.
Calling this meeting to order, this is Tuesday, December 19, 2023, at 6:00 PM. This meeting will be conducted in person in the city council chambers via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS A, section 403B, two D, and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure, as amended and adopted June 6, 2023. Members of the public may join the meeting in person or remotely using the information posted on the meeting calendar on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via website under government slash city council slash contact the council. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please join me for a moment of silence. And now for roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Councilor Stackpole.
Present.
Councilor Hanselman.
Present.
Councilor Martell.
Present.
Councilor Trenchmontane.
Present.
And Councilor Hitchcock.
Present.
Thank you, and I am Mayor Brink. Also present are city managers Steve Buck and Larissa Ricketts happens to be absent tonight. And I'd like to, in order to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting held on December 5, 2023, do I have a motion? Yes.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, do I have a second? Jonathan?
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And now for the mayor's report. I'd like to do a big thank you out to the Rotary Club for donating funds to help our homeless population. Part of those funds are used to have a company come and regularly pick up the trash at one of the sites. And for those people who know, that has been a problem with the amount of trash that's down there. Last week, when I was down visiting one of the encampments, several of the people were getting ready for the trash pickup. It was amazing how thankful they were that they could finally have the ability to have some of the trash removed. Rotary is doing a fundraiser January 16 at MEDE, and their goal this year is to raise $15,000 to help support our homeless population. Those donations go through the Sanford Housing Authority. On Monday, December 11, Sanford held a summit for York County legislators on homelessness. The host organizations were from Biddeford, Kennebunk, Kittery, Old Orchard Beach, and Sanford. The organizations that were involved were Caring Unlimited, Fair Tide, Sanford Housing Authority, Seeds of Hope, York Community Service Association, York County Shelter, and York County Community Action. The things that we addressed were the immediate needs, short-term needs, and long-term needs, and strategies, all these were strategies to address our homeless population. And you'll probably hear more in Steve's reports, and there'll be more online, and we now have, what is the name of our local newspaper that's just online? Is it Main, Mainly? Sanford Springvale News? And, yeah, very simple. And there'll be a report in there about it, too. All right, now, we have, we did have subcommittees this week, and this is the last week that some of our people will be reporting because next January, we will have new people in charge of those subcommittees. So this will be fun making fun of the new people because you always blow it the first time you do it. So Pete, we're watching you. All right, so, subcommittees, do we have some reports? Anne, do you have a report?
You bet. And I didn't write out a whole lot of notes, so it'll be a little bit more succinct than normal. But the Mayor Brink, Councilor Martell, and myself attended last week's Public Safety Subcommittee meeting. It was a great meeting, as it always is. We did hear from dispatch, and there's optimism that we will be able to put together a countywide RFP for an update to our CAD system, and that's good news because it will be potentially some significant savings for our community and those other communities that are part of our regional dispatch center. There are some shifts in staffing at the dispatch center, but there's optimism that we'll be fully staffed or continue to be fully staffed in a short period of time. We also heard from Assistant Chief Rick Small with the Fire Department, and he gave us a lithium battery safety update, which I'm hoping Jordan will share in social media or via our website to help educate the community on lithium battery safety. In terms of Fire Department activity, they did have an increase of 2% so far this year compared to last year, so a slight increase in the services they're providing to our community. From the Police Department, it was fun, as it always is, to meet two new officers to our community, so we got to see them at our meeting. We also learned a little bit about fingerprint compliance here in Sanford and the fact that we're a little bit short of our 60% compliance goal, landing just under, excuse me, landing at just under 40%, and we talked a little bit about some options to increase that, including investment in a new, it's a digital fingerprint system.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilor Martell. We also discussed potentially looking into some new barricades for future parades due to safety concerns at the Holidays Parade and other parades that we'll talk about further. And then finally, just a brief update from the Police Department, and a new piece of data for me is that our officers have just under 140 hours of continuing education a year, which I thought was impressive, and that's it.
Thank you very much. Any other subcommittee reports? Bob?
So zoning also met last Tuesday, and we discussed, there are two items on the agenda, both related to accessory dwelling units and otherwise known as ADUs, and we discussed the revised language that was discussed at previous city council meeting. We worked through that language, and then the high point, and you can get ready for this or not, but we did pass on the recommendations that ADUs, the main house or building in ADUs be owner-occupied. So these are items that will be coming up on a forthcoming agenda, and so if you don't agree with what we decided, then, you know, you can speak up at that time. That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Maura?
Sorry to have missed that meeting. I got in the zone at work, so next time, text me, and I'll get out of the zone. Just a brief one on property, two of the items on the agenda tonight, the rail trail policy was discussed, and some recommended changes were, you should see tonight. We talked about the Westside Plowing Services with CA Plant and Sons, and the one thing not on the agenda that is publicly discussable is the Johnston Park on the Malsum River. We discussed options, so this is the park, if you go past the Armory to the intersection with River Street, you're facing the park. So if you have the, it used to be a gas station when we were children. I'm looking at Pete when I say this. It used to be a gas station when we were young, and it is Bud Johnston Park, and we're talking about options for that location so that maybe people would be able to put in their kayaks, canoes, any non-motorized watercraft, and take a, maybe find a little money to take a really good look at options because we're going to want to make sure people can unload their craft there, even if they have to go off-site onto William Oscar Emery to park. So those are some of the things discussed, and we're going to continue to work through options on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And one of the things under Anne's report about the lithium batteries, because I'm going to make fun of my husband now, when you charge a lithium battery, you need, it'll get warm if it's actually going to break out and turn into a fire. And so I just made a comment that I'm going to have Bill regularly go around and touch all the batteries that we're charging in our house to make sure they are not warm, to make sure we are safe. So just to let you know, Bill, I do make fun of you at all the meetings I'm in. All right. He'll never come again. For the city's manager report, Steve?
Bill, I've got your back. You're buying two planes, not one. You wouldn't have time to tend those batteries after that. Under the manager's report, so I'm gonna, this is a race to the end to keep my voice long enough to give you a brevity of a report. The use of the school, the elections, we talked about that with Memorial Gym, that was really not seen as the strongest of options, so the council quickly moved to consensus towards seeing if we could use the middle school, the former high school, the middle school, and the high school as two polling places, at least by the presidential election year. So there were really, there were three options that were developed around that. One would, because of student safety, one would be the superintendent would close just the Sanford schools and work with our sending schools as far as a dissimilar day. The other was that the York County superintendents may close all of the schools in all of York County as a second option, and the third option is that the state is working on this issue as well, and the state may make a decision to close the schools on election day as well. To that end, the superintendent worked on option three with our local sending schools and found good response from them, many of them use their schools as well, so they are very receptive, so now they're discussing as to what that would look like, as to whether they would only do that for the middle and the high school, and the teachers would have a workshop day, or if they would close all of the schools on those days. So they're working through those details as one of our three options. As far as the third option, well, which is actually option number one, the state's actions, they have an election security working group that's working under the LD 419. Working group has met, they found that a large number of schools currently have to use their schools as their primary polling places, and this is a statewide issue. They asked for a listing of all of the schools that use schools for polling places currently, and to report that out. They met again on December 13, but I don't have the outcome of that yet. I'll get that, I would anticipate, in this Friday's legislative bulletin, so I'll eagerly await that to see what their recommendation might be to the legislature for the short session. The next item is Haybrook Bridge. The city council, and the city is in a suit with the town of Alfred over Haybrook Bridge in the Stone Road. So, long story short, on this, back in, on January 17 of 2012, Alfred and Sanford entered into and signed a memorandum of understanding for the maintenance of Haybrook Bridge. And I can remember going out there when I first started working here with myself, our Public Works Director, some of the elected officials from Alfred, and standing on the bridge and having them say, "We talked about this 10 years ago, why haven't we done this yet?" So an MOU was signed, that MOU did not come to fruition. The next piece of the equation is on October 5 of 2022, the state finally closed the bridge because of its current condition. The city had done a limited amount of repair on that, had built Sanford for one half of that. This is the minor span, it's over Haybrook Bridge, it's co-owned by the two municipalities. Alfred did not desire to put any money into that, so it fell to a state of disrepair to the point that it was discontinued on October 5 of 2022. The next action was June 17 of '23. The Board of Selectmen in Alfred had first put an order out there recommending discontinuance of Stone Road on the opposite side of Alfred, or Haybrook Bridge. Town meeting confirmed that on June 17 of last year, and in that order, they actually approved $0 for damages, and they refused, even after a legal notice was sent, to recognize the town of Sanford as in a butter, and as having legal rights to the bridge as well as to any road closures. So to date, damages incurred so far is in excess of $34,000, and aside from whatever else the court might find in our favor should we prevail. So that case is ongoing, it's near year-end, I wanted to bring that to your attention as to where we're at. They just granted a further continuance until February 19 for Alfred to continue to respond to the case.
February 29.
29?
Keep your ear open.
The next item I wanted to report out is the Maine Blue Ribbon Commission's studying of emergency medical services. This is very impactful for us, and we have a number of elements in here that will affect us. Part of this work is looking at the community paramedicine program, it's also looking at the reimbursement levels, it's looking at the unequal investments of various levels of government as far as who's making the investments in EMS services and providing them versus who's getting paid. It's looking at workforce development, it's looking at training, staff compensation, and retention, and all of those factors that ensue. State Legislature passed, level of funding became effective as of October 23. No distributions have been made yet, but pursuant to that distribution, Sanford is in alignment to receive $200,000 towards our EMS service to help cover extraordinary costs. So when we do see that funds, I'll bring that to the council's attention, and it will be very well received, I assure. LD 1751 is looking to, is an act to maximize federal funding in support of EMS. Basically, it's looking to increase rates of pay for neonatal transports, which we tend to try not to do. No transport calls, we get a significant amount of those, we'll report to somebody's location for services, and they will then decide that they're not going to be transported after you've done a large medical assessment and such under that, we will, seeking to get reimbursement. And the third item under that bill is the community paramedicine program, so permanent funding for that. The next act is an act to require reimbursement of fees for treatment rendered by public and private ambulance services, that's to provide insurance reimbursements for community paramedic services. So they're already going to start including that in Main Care and Medicare, and they're going to add that to the table of cost for private insurances. And I had asked for this one, LD 1409, is a bill which looks at, not different than police officers we have today, we pay to train them if they're hired away from us by another agency in that first five-year period, they pay one twentieth of that back per year, looking at doing the same thing for EMS providers as well. Because at the time, we incur almost $40,000 of cost to take somebody to the paramedic level, it is significant if we lose them in that short, in the interim period of time. General Assistance, the next piece I wanted to report out on, there are several favorable bills out there that could greatly assist us. One is LD 1664, it looks at taking the GA reimbursement rates from the current 70% to 90%. The second bill, LD 1732, it looks at doing that as well as providing enhanced training and funding for training and increased departmental support. So right now, we can't bill any portion of our administrative cost for administering the program, I believe this bill would allow for that to be, come under considerations. And I attached in the report further that the utilization rates, as was disclosed in the first, second quarter report of this year, general assistance is running significantly over. Up until COVID hit, we had budgeted gross expenditures of approximately $150,000 per year. Through COVID, we increased that because of the implementation of emergency sheltering and such under that, although there was increased reimbursements and such. But long story short, we had built that budget to gross expenditures for this year's budget of $300,000, but that was before any asylum seeker impacts had hit us before. So currently, year-to-date, we're at $460,669 as of the end of November. $348,000 of that, or 75, 6% has been spent on our new mainers, and $112,000, or 24% has been spent on our resident mainers. So we have a spending ratio of 3.1 to 1. So if it continues to track monthly, as it is currently, we anticipate to have gross expenditures of $1 million, just under $1.4 million for the year, which would be net expenditures to the city of $414,000 and reimbursements from the state at $967,000. If I look at just our general assistance program for our resident mainers, that projection falls out to be $337,000, so we would have been pretty much spot on from what we were anticipating. But again, we had never been hit by the asylum seekers, so we had never budgeted for that, but that shows you the degree of magnitude. The last thing that I had is, I just took quick notes here, I didn't put it in the report. I was able to attend last Tuesday during subcommittees, I went over to North Burwick. Dwayne Moore, the manager in North Burwick, has taken the lead on the 14 communities for solid waste negotiations. So our Casella contract, our current Casella contract expires June of 2025. The former Merck contract, which was the incinerating plant in Biddeford, when Casella bought that out, we went through a long legal battle, ended up staying with Casella as part of that consultation. Again, that contract comes out June of 2025, so we're getting ahead of the curve. We started our conversations with Casella last Tuesday. We're still seeking and waiting for proposals to come from EcoMaine for both our solid, both our recyclables and our solid waste, and the same thing to come from Turnkey, which is in Rochester. So we're going to have a minimum of three quotes for a package deal, both recyclables and solid waste. I did note there likely will be significant increases in the per-ton cost. The favorable deal that we have with Casella now came from a lawsuit, and there was approximately $14 million, excuse me, $45 million that would have been paid out to the communities under the Merck contract, but they blended that back into our favorable rate. That's what the paperwork says. I do note that there's capacity issues with everybody that we're talking with as far as longevity, how much longer their transfer facilities will be open. The Juniper Ridge facility is hitting capacity, it needs to be relicensed for Casella, which is where our waste is going now, is Juniper Ridge's bypass. Perk is coming back online in the central main area, although its future has been tenuous at best. And there's another waste of energy facility that's trying to get up and get going that could take some of this capacity on, but it hasn't turned its switch on yet. So in the Turnkey facility in Rochester, we believe, we're hearing that they have a very limited capacity, and they're going to be out of business, and there's no new capacities under permitting right now. So it's going to be a very interesting exercise to figure out where the city's going post 2025 with our solid waste and recycling.
Thank you. I have several questions, I don't know if others might have a few. I'm going to start going backwards in your report. I'll start with trash bags. One of the most important reasons for us to recycle is because it's less of the solid waste, or the waste that would go into those trash bags.
Currently, yes.
Yes. And if, right now, whatever I put into that trash bag, because I'm buying that bag, is paying for the trash. But if stuff goes up, are we going to need to go up on the cost of the trash bag?
Likely.
Likely, okay.
Likely. So actually, the city purchases the bag. When you pay the $14.50 for a sleeve of bags at the store, you're paying the fee for your curbside collection, solid waste collection, and recycling, you're paying for that. The city has already bought the bags.
Okay.
Of course, with your tax dollars, but the bags have been purchased, but that sleeve, that price that you pay when people say, "Why are these bags so expensive?" The bags are no more expensive than a contractor bag at any hardware store. The fee that you're paying is the cost for the services. It's the processing, it's picking up your solid waste, it's picking it up, it's paying for the disposal, it's paying for the single sort recycling facilities that we take to EcoMaine.
All right, thank you. And I wanted to revisit the 70% to 90% reimbursement rate. Is there, because I guess I look at that as, if we go to the 90%, then all of Maine is helping Southern Maine because that's where most of people are coming in and staying, they're not in Caribou or Van Buren.
Well, as far as asylum seekers.
Yes.
But I believe there's a major discussion out there with the legislature that GA is not the appropriate mechanism to be paying those expenditures out for asylum seekers.
The governor has put forward for a new office, an office of new mainers.
They've reached out, they've met with our GA down here in this area and across the state, trying to get a better understanding of what those numbers look like, what the distributions have been like, what difficulties they've had in, you know, handling and processing and such under that. My hopes would be that there would be a dual system, there'd be one for the new mainers and one back to what the new general assistance was for. Because during COVID, there was a lot of, it went all the way to the Attorney General's Office back when, during the LePage administration was, how do you treat asylum seekers that come in, do they qualify? Finally, a ruling came down that said, yes, treat them no different than anybody else in that system, but the system did not have enough resources assigned to it to handle those impacts.
And the other question was about voting, and the state's looking at it, and York County is looking at it. Are we basically focused on the November voting time and not the June?
Thank you. So the indication from our superintendent was the, this coming June election would be extremely problematic, because they've already set the school calendar, so it would be very difficult for them because that's at the end of the school year. If we don't incur much or any snow days, the school, the school may be out of session. If they do incur school, snow days and such under that, to take another day off, they would have to come back after Juneteenth Day. So that would be a no to use those two facilities, we'd have to stay the same, but we would have plenty of time to make the appropriate notice that we have to do to change our polling locations from the current three to the proposed two of the middle school and the high school for the November election, which I think is the election volume that we are most concerned with. Being a presidential election year, there's going to be a huge volume there, and I think there's a degree of comfort from the conversations we've had in the past that between the middle school and the high school, you could very easily handle that volume in a comfortable setting that's truly ADA compliant, all on one level, with the parking facilities as well.
Thank you. Do any of you guys have questions? All right. Steve, do you have homelessness update?
Yes, so this is abbreviated as well. So we met this past Monday, yesterday, yes, yesterday. We debriefed first on the homeless forum that we did on December 11. Thank you, Representative Mistracchio, for attending that meeting, and I'm very appreciative of that. Just debriefing on it, I was, I was very pleased with the amount of engagement. So many legislators came up and were talking with us after the fact about, you know, next steps, and it was a very, it was a very engaged conversation. Carter Friend, our executive director at YCAC, has put the information out electronically to legislators, and he's working to further compile data sets, because I know that's something that you were asking for as well, Representative, was the data, because you can use that in referencing when you're working on bills. So we're going to get that out as well. And the managers of the seven communities, we're getting back together to continue to drill down on the advocacy pieces and how best to, when various bills come up in this short session, to bring forward testimony and support and/or participate in working groups around those. We next then tried to focus on the optimization of the Lafayette Warming Center. The indications were that it's currently being somewhat underutilized, it's being utilized well for meals, but not for the overnight stay, that there's a, there's not a comfort level yet with the securing of their possessions. So several options were identified. One of those other options was lockable crates that was identified after the fact, as well as somebody had made reference to lockers that they knew of that were currently out of service and not being used. And the resource hub has not been stood up yet because that's, the shelter is taking that back on, and they haven't been able to hire the staff for that yet. So the second floor is not currently operational. Management of the dispersed encampments, we continue, the MHU and other providers continue to manage the encampments where they are without pushing them or moving them out. We discussed that at length. It was noted that the trash collection, as you referenced earlier, was somewhat unsightly because the trash collector had missed a cycle, so it doubled up in its capacity, so they've doubled, they put in for an extra hauling. Thank you Rotary for paying for that, so that trash has been now moved out, and the MHU said that they would work with, ensuring that they don't bring the trash forward until the day before collections. No different than our local ordinance says. We talked about the shower facilities. The YMCA is still, has still has the availability of the showers, so they're going to work on transports there. Laundry facilities, it was made known that the laundromat downtown, two dollars can get a load done, so that was a way to address that. Case management by our partnering entities, that really is the biggest topic at this point in time, and the coordination thereof. Eric Small, our deputy chief, is back from FBI training. We talked at length about who's doing what and how best to facilitate that. One of the questions is, and it was brought up, that there's a resource map for all of York County, so I'm trying to get my hands on that. There is a difference between who is charged with doing what versus what is actually happening. So what we're trying to do is identify if there's budget requests coming forward this year for further coordinating staff or boots-on-the-ground staffing, the type and number in the MHU unit or other staffing to assist with the situation at hand. We need to know where that investment is going to have the greatest impact. And a lot of the conversations so far has come up against, even with additional capacity here at the city level, the capacities aren't there elsewhere for mental health beds or substance use beds. So it's conversation in flux as to what that appropriate type and number and fix is. So internally here for the city staff, we're going to continue to work on the type and number of staff positions so that the budget requests can be made this year as part of the cycle. We had discussed a public health officer position, developing a job description and the cost around that. They talked about two lower-cost solutions, which would be peer support specialists. It's a known position to be out there that could help boots-on-the-ground out in the field to supplement the mental health unit. I talked about the service map, getting our hands on that and connecting that. And the, our local service providers are working on the York County Resource Hub. Other counties have a resource hub already set up, somewhat stronger than what we do here currently, so they're going to be working on that. Part of that is using the HMIS system as far as the coordinated entry, so that, we used an example, there was an individual that potentially had a housing, that had a housing voucher, but needed to fill out work with a vesta in Portland. If the HMIS system was used properly, there would not have been a need to transport that person back and forth. We're trying to make a more efficient use of pieces. And the last piece of information in here, the update, the MHU has made contact now with 214 unique contacts. There are 155 known to be unhoused and outside that they're tracking. Again, the warming shelter, they're developing a trusted relationship there, and it's really around personal possessions. When they walk away from their encampment, go to the facilities, and even the possessions they have with them, they need to be locked up so that they don't lose that, otherwise they won't use the facilities, so. And the next meeting will be January 22nd because of the holiday schedules.
Thank you, Steve. A couple of statements to make. For those people who want to donate, the PD is not the place to do that. Sanford Housing, a lot of stuff can go through there, but if you look online, they're now going to put a list of where you can take things, because the PD doesn't have the capacity to handle the clothing or the food or the, and actually, they never handle the funds. The funds have always gone through the Sanford Housing. So there'll be a better and more detailed list online along with the phone numbers. And I wanted to make a follow-up comment on belongings of the people in the encampments. Bill and I went down to the encampment after Franny's does a family, community meal on Sundays, and then we take some of the food that's left over from that, and we go down. And through talking with the people down there, we discovered that if there are two people in a tent, only one goes to that meal, because they want to protect their belongings that are in the encampment, because if they leave, stuff disappears, which happened to one gentleman today. We were down there, because we knew he needed fuel for his generator, and somebody stole his gas can. So who would steal from a homeless person? That's really low. And most of the time, it's not the people in the encampment stealing from one another. So that's pretty sad about how they have to protect their belongings. So it's not simple for them to just go to a shelter, because they're so, those belongings are very important to them. In fact, Steve and I were talking earlier today about, there was trailers in a community that, they were really terrible trailers, and the community, they were going to buy them new trailers to put up in a cleaner, safer spot, and their trailer, they still wanted the old trailer, because that was their home. So when you go by and you see those tents out there, those are homes. And when we go into the encampment, we actually say the words, knock, knock. And then we, Bill and I will say, we're Bill and Becky from Franny's with food. So it's knock, knock, because that is, they don't have a door and nothing to knock on, but you have to be polite, because this is their home. And nor do they want citizens walking through their encampment, just like you don't want somebody walking through your backyard. So people need to respect that, and don't go into the encampments unless you are invited. All right. Any questions? Good, thank you. We can move right along. Okay, we have a presentation to the City Council, the fiscal year 2223 audit from Christian A. Smith, CPA, CFE, which I'm not sure what that stands for, from 30 Long Creek Drive, South Portland. And Ronnie, are you a part of this? Are you introducing, or are you just, is Christian?
Good evening.
I know you love to present.
I do, Becky, I do love this. I'd like to introduce Christian Smith with Whiply. He's a partner at Whiply in South Portland, and I've been working with Christian now for how many years? Nine, 10? 10, right. Anyway, he's going to present on the 2223 audit.
Thank you. And Ronnie, you did such a good job presenting.
Are there slides to click on and bring up, or?
I can click up here, Ben, if you want to do that. Or I can do this way.
If you remember at the beginning of the meeting, I said Larissa was out, so she handles a lot of the stuff, so Steve's got it, I think.
Okay.
This is for Ben to format.
Okay, this can work, this is fine.
He'll rein it in here.
There we go.
There we go, okay.
Always trust in Ben.
Okay.
He's really good.
Thank you for the introduction. I also want to make sure I give credit to my manager on the job, Kelsey Fernet. She does an awful lot of the work and oversees the staff and works directly with both the city and the school department to complete the financial statement audit, which is quite involved and long process, but I certainly could not do it without Kelsey's participation in this. So if you want to, yep, the next slide. I just always kind of want to communicate what the relationship is with the audit firm. We are independent auditors. We work for the council. We do work with management to perform the audit, and you've hired us to express an opinion on the financial statements, which are management's responsibility. And the result of our audit is, we've expressed what we call an unmodified or a clean opinion, which means that the financial statements are, they're fairly stated, they're complete and accurate in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the highest level of assurance that you look to receive. This is just a list of all the different reports that we issue. There are quite a lot of reports, and I'm just going to be going over some of the detail and, some of the information in summary form. So certainly, if you have specific questions, if you've had a, if you've had a chance to review the actual documents themselves and have questions, let me know, and I can answer those. But we do issue a separate set of financial statements for the city, which includes the school department, and then a separate set of financial statements of just the school department by itself. We issue separate management letters for the city and the school department. We also issue a separate required communication letter, which we'll go over the detail of that in the next slide, but that's basically, for some context, that's just basically an overview of how the audit went and any issues, things of that nature. We issue what's called a single audit report and data collection form, so that's the city and the school's grant funds combined, and we have to test grant funds for compliance with federal laws and regulations, as well as how the money was spent. And so we test a variety of federal grants between both the city and the school in both years. There's a form called the State of Maine Audit Procedural Form, and that's where we have to submit a report to the State of Maine Auditor, reporting on the completion of the city's audit. That's a clean report as well, should make mention of that. And then we also issue the last two reports there, the reconciliation of the MEFS, the financial report in compliance with the Maine School Finance Act. Those are reports, that is a report that we issue for the school department to the State Department of Education. Again, that particular report is a clean report, no findings, no noncompliance with laws or regulations. This next slide just kind of summarizes the results of some of our letters and some of our reports. So it's important to understand that within our, the management letter portion of our reports, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so that would be indicative of a significant weakness in control that could affect financial reporting, so we don't have any comments of that nature. We do sometimes issue what we call best practices recommendations, don't have any recommendations regarding the city's operations. We do have one best practices recommendation for the school department that is regarding just continuing to keep on top of grant billing and being timely with that process. And that's, you know, I think that's an improvement over the prior year where we had three or four comments. This next bullet, the third bullet here really talks about what I called before, the required communication letter. So to sum up both audits, there were no changes in accounting principles. We didn't have any difficulties in performing the audit, no disagreements with management, and no audit adjustments. So the audit went very well, and there wasn't anything really to report in terms of, you know, I guess, issues, finding, or significant changes with respect to accounting practices or completion of the audit. So that's a very good report as well. And then with respect to federal grants tested, so I had mentioned the single audit report, we did have to test more grants this year than in the past. Typically, in a typical year, we would test one or two grants, just based on how the funding came in and the amount of funding that came in. We tested two school, tested two school grants. One was COVID-related ESER funds, and the other was Title I funds, which is typically a larger program each year. And we also had to test two city grants. The airport improvement program had some, had significant funds spent, I think about 1.6 million, if I remember, and then also coronavirus relief funds as well that the city received, which was kind of in conjunction with the school's money as well. It was the same grant program, but you received two different pots of money, one for the city and one for the school. So we actually ended up testing four grants this year, and there was no findings with respect to how the money was spent or compliance with federal regulations. This next slide really just kind of gives you a really high-level overview of some of the highlights within the financial statements, so we are required to report.
Can I have you stop just one second? You made a statement, and I know it'll get lost in the rest of the report. You made it sound very simple. We tested two grants on the city side and two grants on the school side. I'd like to point out, those were huge grants. They weren't simple, so that was quite a task.
Yes, I mean, I, I got the numbers in front of me, but yeah, I mean, each grant is at least probably close to a million dollars, if not more. The ESER grant was probably like three or four million, so yes, there's quite a bit of money that passes through there.
Yeah, and complex.
Yes.
So yes, okay, thank you.
So within the financial statements that we issue, there, you know, there's actually three different sets of financial statements, three bases of accounting. So the one that's required, that we don't really spend a lot of time looking at on an accrual basis, so we're required to book, we're required to report the cost of all of your fixed assets, your buildings, your infrastructure, your vehicles, your roads, et cetera, depreciated, as well as offset that with long-term debt, pension liabilities, post-retirement healthcare, things of that nature. So on an accrual basis, assets exceed liabilities by about $66 million, so that's good. You've got a positive net position. The information you're probably more interested in is your, you know, what are your fund balances? So your fund balances are about 26 million, 26.3 million, and we'll have some slides later on about the general fund, fund balance, but, so you know, your fund balances are basically your general fund, special revenue fund, which is mostly grant funds, and then you've got capital projects funds, which are for capital projects. So the sum of those three funds make up about $26 million of available funds to be spent in the future. The result for the year, the general fund ended with a total fund balance of 15.9 million, which was a decrease of 600,000 over the prior year. To split that between the city and the school, the school's fund balance decreased 400,000, and the city's decreased 200,000. And that was a result of a number of things. You had, overall, you had a positive variance in revenues and expenditures of about 3.3 million, and that's broken out based on, you had a $691,000 favorable variance, revenues exceeded budget, and your expenditures were less than budget by 2.6 million. So that makes up your 3.3 million positive budget variance. But that is also offset by the use of funds. You've got committed funds for carryover of capital projects. You also use a certain amount of funds each year to offset the budget, to ease the increase in property tax burden and other committed funds as well. So when you factor that use of funds in, that results in a decrease of fund balance of about $600,000. So other governmental funds total about 10.3 million of the total. Those decreased about 600,000 in special revenue funds as a result of grants. And then also capital projects funding, capital project expenditures as well, that increased about 1.3 million, and most of that had to do with the school facility upgrade and the airport improvement program, which I previously mentioned. Another key bullet point that I like to make mention of is total cash in the bank that the city has. The city has $31 million of cash in the bank, which is basically the same as the prior year, and we always make sure, we're testing and making sure that there is, to identify if there is credit risk associated with your money in the bank, and all of the city's money is either insured by the FDIC or fully collateralized by a letter of credit that's been pledged to the account by the bank. So none of that $31 million is at risk of credit exposure if the banks go under, so. And that, you know, hasn't been a concern until recent years, so that's definitely important to have. This next slide just kind of shows you the different components of fund balance. You've got about $4 million of fund balance, that is what was considered committed, and that is, two and a half million of that is capital projects or capital plan for the city. The other million and a half is capital plan money for the school that's been set aside. The assigned fund balance shows about 2.3 million, and that is comprised of $850,000 each for the city and the school, a fund balance that's been set aside to use in the fiscal year that we're in now to offset the budget. And then there's another $600,000 of city assigned funds in there for, I think it's the rec program and a payroll reserve as well. I think that the 20, my 2022 column for assigned, I don't think that's correct. I think I, I think I'm missing the assigned fund balance for budget for the prior year. That should be pretty consistent, I think, from one year to the next, so I don't think that changed. You typically have been allocating eight or 900,000 a year to offset the budget in each year, as well as the school has as well, so. So that, what's left is what's called the unassigned fund balance, and that's the largest column on the right, a total of $9.6 million. 8.1 million of that is the city, 1.5 million of that is the school, and that's basically just funds that are available to use for any purpose going forward. I've only got a few other slides, which will be fairly quick. I don't know if anybody's got any questions at this point, or?
Any questions? Go ahead.
So this is just showing just the city alone. The city's fund balance alone is pretty consistent, about 12.1 million this year compared to last year, which is an increase of where it was two years ago, but it was approximately 11 million. So you kind of see the trend there. The next slide shows the school department's fund balance. You can see a pretty big uptick in 2022, which had a lot to do with COVID money that was able to supplement the budget. They're starting to spend that money down now as well, and so now they're at about They're starting to spend that money down now as well, and so now they're at about a $3.8 million total fund balance. So that's the $400,000 decrease in fund balance that I had mentioned previously. I have, so I've reintroduced some slides that I hadn't presented in the last few years, just comparing you to some other communities. This particular slide is just looking at the, just the unassigned portion of fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. I did add, so I, Bitterford and Saco are both York County communities that are comparable size, so I added those. I didn't have those included in the past. I took Auburn off. I wasn't able to find information for Auburn. None of their reports would upload. But, you know, just generally as a rule of thumb, I think I've always been told by people that I know in the bond rating agencies that they like to see between one and two months fund balance unassigned. So if you're in between that threshold, you're in a good spot, so that's basically, say, eight to 16%. So based on what we have here, the city of Sanford is at 9.6% of unassigned fund balance compared to budget. So that's, you know, fairly comparable to Scarborough there, which is at 10.7. I think Saco's numbers are missed, they are somewhat misleading because of the way their school department is set up. The school department is not included in the general fund. It's a separate fund all by itself. If you kind of factored in the school department, they'd probably be really closer to like 12%. So, you know, I think definitely where the city stands, it's in a, it's in a, it's in a good financial position, and it's always just, it's really just a, it's a policy decision, really, to determine, well, how much, you know, how much of the taxpayers' money do you want to hold in reserve, and how much do you want to leave with the taxpayer? So, you know, the communities that have maybe a little higher fund balance, you know, it's all maybe part of, part of their, what they have for future plans, but it's also a decision in terms of how much taxpayer money you want to hold, so. So the next slide shows annual debt service requirements as a percentage of budget. So Sanford is showing at the higher rate here at about 13.5%. However, it's important to know that all of the debt, substantially, substantially all of the debt, if not all of the debt, is funded by the state. So this is all related to the school construction, and it's all paid for by the state, or substantially all of it's paid for by the state because that was a state-approved project. So if you're comparing that to the other communities, I know, I can tell you for certain that Scarborough's 11.3% is all borne by the taxpayers. None of that is subsidized by the state. And I can also tell you Westbrook's 10%, you know, probably 8% of that is borne by the taxpayers, 2% is borne by the state. So if we were to look at it in another way, Sanford's number really would be zero in terms of like what's borne by the taxpayers, and all the other communities' percentages would be real, would be basically the same. So, you know, in terms of their, the debt service burden is very low on the taxpayers here in Sanford.
I do know we're higher than zero, though.
What's that?
We're higher than zero.
Yeah, I think there was, there was, was it like 10, maybe 10% of the school construction was picked up locally?
Yeah, I think we still have the police station on there and public work. We have a few odds and ends still hanging out there.
It wasn't a lot, though. Just to disclose, there's always changes in accounting practices and principles and standards, nothing, there were no new standards this year affecting the financial statements. So it was a relatively quiet year. And that's, yeah, that's the, that's it for my presentation. I want to thank Ronnie and her finance department, as well as Cheryl and her finance department at the, at the school department. They do a great job in helping us get through this and get to the finish line, and actually our reports were issued about two weeks earlier this year than last year, so that's, you know, that's, that's an improvement for sure.
And we do have an outstanding financial team here, so they are amazing. Do you have any questions? Anyone with a question?
Nothing, Ian?
Oh, we can't quiz him?
I couldn't hear it.
Thank you.
He's our vocal auditor, like, tough type person.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to the next part, and we have Representative Anne Marie Mistracchio here. And Anne Marie, would you join me at the podium?
I want to know where all the Christmas sweaters are. Oh, we didn't do it.
They told me not to wear them.
Well, they made us wear them last year, and I didn't want to do it, and I did it. And I thought I was going to see all Christmas sweaters up here.
I have no Christmas sweater.
Baloney, everybody had one last year.
For those people.
It would be a shirt last year, that doesn't fit anymore.
For those people tuning in, Anne Marie is the one who talked me into running for mayor, so she was the mayor before me, and so it was pretty big shoes to fill. So I haven't figured out yet if she's still my friend or not. I'll let you know at the end of the year, okay? And I'm going to invite, because if you've read our agenda, this is for Dr. and Mrs. William Frank, and so if you would join us at the podium, we have the, the state will like to give you an award, and then the city would like to, so I'm going to let Anne Marie go first.
Where do you want them?
I'm going to have you stand here.
Okay.
And have you guys stand right here. Oh, hold on a second. Just to let you know, we had to delay because we're getting, the Frank kids are all online watching this right now. And our children are online, so.
I did have to wonder why we were forced to listen to the audit.
Yeah.
But, that's okay, it was, it was a wonderful audit. I didn't mind. I'm sure they didn't mind either.
Could you step right up there so they can see? I'm kind of visual we're all over here.
And I just want to make sure, I, after sitting in the back, I do realize that it can be difficult to hear. I never believed it when I was sitting up here, but it is true, so if you can't hear, raise your hand. I just have to say that it was a real pleasure that Becky asked me to put this sentiment in. I didn't realize it had been 50 years. I know what an accomplishment that is. I'm going to be 43 years next year married, and 50 just seems, that's another seven years. Well, people, well, it's not that, it's that when you get married, 50 years, like forever, it just doesn't, you know, like, till death do you part kind of thing, and it's 50 years. I mean, it just went like that. So it is a real, no, but, well, that, no, but, I mean, it just seems like yesterday. So I know that's hard maybe for somebody that's just getting married to understand, but I get it, and it's really wonderful to come and celebrate something like that, so. From the State of Maine, be it known to all that we, the members of the Senate and House of Representatives, join in recognizing William and Mary Francis Frank of Sanford, who are celebrating their 50th wedding anniversary. We extend our congratulations and best wishes, and be it ordered that this official expression of sentiment be sent forth with, on behalf of the 131st Legislature and the people of the State of Maine. And it is signed, given this 12th day of December 2023 at the State Capitol of Augusta, Maine, President of the Senate Troy Jackson, Rachel Talbot Ross, Speaker of the House, and introduced and co-sponsored by Anne Marie Mistracchio, Senator Matt Harrington, Representative Anne Marie Fredericks, and Representative Lucas Lanigan. So congratulations from all of us and from the whole state.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right there, we'll switch places.
Okay. All right. They're going to wish they were never my neighbor after this. I want you to know that Aurora and I have been working on this. So all the information I have, the dates and stuff came from her, so if anything is wrong, Aurora, wherever you are in the land out there. But the first part of this, I, I just had to put, I know a proclamation is usually not as personal as this is, but I just had to share. 38, and I will cry. 38 years ago, we moved in next door to the Franks. 38 years, hard to believe. We have been close friends ever since, but we feel more like family. As neither of us had family in Sanford, all of our birthday and our Christmas celebrations are together. In fact, you almost can't tell whose kids are whose because our pictures are all intertwined. Because of our close relationship, I stand here now telling you that the Franks are an outstanding example of what a marriage should be, what parenting is all about, what being a good neighbor is about, and what serving our community is all about. It's endless what they do. I am so proud to call them friend and neighbor. Thank you for just being you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it goes on. So this is an official proclamation now. Whereas William, Bill, and Mary Francis Frank married December 29, 1973 in Montclair, New Jersey. I hope that she got that right.
Yep.
Right? Whereas they arrived in Sanford on August 1, 1980, and Bill started here as a family practitioner and served in the capacity for 36 years, caring for generations of Sanford residents. And whereas Mary Francis began teaching for Sanford School Department in 1990 and served there as a middle school language arts teacher. I was also her principal, so it was, it was so nice. Whereas both Bill and Mary Francis have long been active in the community volunteering for a number of organizations. Whereas notably, Mary Francis served on the Board of Directors for Waypoint, formerly known as WABN, serving children and adults with intellectual and development disabilities. And whereas Bill served on the Board of Directors for nonprofit Gymnastics Connection, which offered free technology to seriously ill children to help them continue their education during their treatment. And whereas Dr. Frank served as a local health officer in Sanford for many years and a medical examiner for York County since 1983. And whereas he helped the State Victims Compensation Board, which helped fund healthcare for the victims of crime. And whereas Mary Francis taught at Holy Family Church and was a member of the church choir for years. And whereas together they raised four children in Sanford, Charlotte, Billy, Angela, Aurora, all of whom now have children of their own, and they're welcomed in the house at Christmas time, but they're welcome to go home at the end. Now therefore, the City Council of Sanford, Maine does hereby offer their sincere congratulations to Bill and Mary Francis on reaching the milestone of 50 years of marriage on December 29, 2023. And thanks them for their many years of service and dedication to the community of Sanford Springvale, Maine, dated 19th day of December 2023. So congratulations, you two.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you, guys.
Just want to say ver, a little smile. Just, just very briefly, 41 of those 50 years, 41 of those 50 years we have spent in Sanford, and they have been wonderful years in our life. We, Sanford has supported both of our careers. Our children have gone to school in Sanford, you know, from kindergarten up through high school, and they're all very happily employed at this point in time, and we couldn't be more proud of Sanford. Sanford schools, what Sanford does all the time, and most recently Sanford's efforts with the unhoused and the asylum seekers. So we are very proud for what Sanford has given to us. Thank you.
And we'll get the official one. Our person who takes care of this is out today.
Yep, that's fine.
So we'll be getting that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll take just a second for anyone who would like to leave after those presentations. Please feel free to do so. We're going on to public participation next, and there's none on our list, but I can't see who is online. First of all, I also want to thank the Franks for that great plug for Sanford schools and Sanford community. It was fantastic. Nobody online, okay, so we can move right along to public hearings. Just give me a second to get my papers all in order. The City Council will take public comments on the following. And I'm going to open this hearing, a hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC, DBA, Land, Land Rice Cannabis for an Adult Use Retail Cannabis Store License at 22, and I never get this name right. Samada. Yeah, I know it's Adams backwards. And I can never get it forward. All right, Sanford, Maine. Any, I just did at the beginning, any comments? Anyone for? Anyone against? Close this hearing. A, here, open the next hearing, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Green Truck Farms 6 LLC, 26 Hancock Lane, Sanford, Maine, for an adult use retail cannabis store license. Anybody to speak for? Anybody to speak against? I hear close this hearing. On the consent agenda, are there any objections or need to pull any of the items off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I declare consent agenda approved. Old business, in order to hold a hearing on the vacation of certain portions of unbuilt and unacceptable ways in a subdivision known as Wormwood Park, as described on the attached notice and draft order, in order the ways vacated. Ian, are you presenting on this?
I am. And then if you could open a hearing, we may have some people to speak in the room and also online. It's, it's not a public hearing, it's just a hearing for those that are in the park that have been notified, excuse me, in the subdivision that were notified.
Okay, so then I need to officially, for this section, say the public hearing is now open on this?
You can do that.
Okay.
And then I just wanted to review with you, so we talked about this about a month and a half ago, to initiate the process. You did the notice, and there's a copy of that in your agenda. And then what you're going to be doing here tonight is ordering the vacation of this, and that's going to be the public's claim to that, to that, those ways. And the ways are Coolidge Street, it's Coolidge Street between Harding Street and Putnam Street. It's an unbuilt and unaccepted road. And then also Granite Street and Myrtle Street. So these two sections were never built. Granite Street is to the south of Lowell Street. In reviewing for this item, I discovered that there's a little tiny sliver of, of land that's unassigned to any parcels. And you may ask what happens to these parcels after, you know, you, the city vacates it? Well, this, this process sits in the registry of deeds for a year, and during that time, anybody can, can detest, thank you, contest, there we go. And during that time period, they would have to file an action in court and prevail. And what they'd be contesting is that they have a private right to that road section. So through this notice process, I've heard feedback from some neighbors. The portions that are next to Coolidge Street, I heard back yesterday from a fellow who found out that by doing this, his width of his property is actually going to be increasing by about 15 feet, so he's going to actually gain land. And also through this, the city will retain an easement for public facilities and maintaining those public facilities. So if, for example, there's some catch basin that needs to be accessed and cleaned that's on one of these, or some particular drainage way, the city has a right to access those, those facilities on those ways. So I've heard back from a number of folks in the community about this and explained to them the process. I mean, the process is that you have to notify everybody and the mortgagees in the subdivision. So I provided a list, it's about 50 properties and associated mortgagees. It's the Exhibit A on there. It also talks about damages, and I'm glad to take any more questions. It's, it's a rather convoluted process, but thankfully it's called vacating, or vacations.
It does sound like it's going to be something really good.
It's always better when it's at the end of the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Any questions? Okay, moving right along. Okay, moving right along. Go ahead. No questions. Any questions from the public? There? No, I think we're all set. I don't see any hands.
Anybody online?
No one. No hands up. Nope.
Okay, so there's a document for you to sign this evening, and then we'll record that in the registry of deeds, and, and then begins that.
Do we have to vote, make a motion or anything on this?
Yes, you should. The second item on there was hold the hearing and then order the street vacated. Or order the way vacated.
All right.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion, please? Pete?
I motion to vacate the Waypoint, whatever that is.
Ways. You just had to pluralize ways, you've got it.
Oh, ways, okay, we got it.
All right, yes. Thank you, Jonathan, and all those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. That was very different than what we're normally used to. So I think you're toying with us. Okay, under new business, in order to accept an annual audit conducted by, and I will never get this right, Whipflee Fly? Whipfly LLC for the fiscal year 2023. And Ronnie, are you doing any, so we can just vote on this? All right, so can I have a motion? Bob?
Move, we approve the audit as presented for fiscal year 2022 slash 23.
All right, and a second, Jonathan?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. You know, it's really quiet when Ann can't hear very well. Okay, in order to approve a temporary land lease agreement between the City of Sanford and Northern Maine Community College for the use of Southwest ramp at the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport for the purposes of driving Academy course, and I think we've heard about this before, is Allison on, I see you, Allison. All right.
Good evening, I'm Allison Navia, I'm your airport manager of the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. And you're correct, this is the same area, same lessee who would be using that area for the same purpose as we did last year. So it went very well. The purpose of the temporary lease is to host a commercial driver's license course for Northern Maine Community College. So this is the southwest ramp that's over at the very end of Baker Drive, and it's within the fence. It's about 376 feet by 175 feet, and they set that all up and use it for about six weeks to do the hands-on driver portion of their course. They set up all their cones, and they have instructors out there, and they do that. Part of the agreement also includes us typically, because that, there's no use for that ramp yet to the, to date, we don't plow it, but we do plow it from the beginning of the winter all the way through, knowing that we don't want to leave any snow there or have any ice built up for when they come at the end of February or the beginning of March. A little bit different this time, the only thing that's different, I updated the rates and actually had FAA review it for that temporary non-aeronautical use. There's a new compliance director for FAA, and she's a little bit of a stickler with things, so she went through the entire agreement. And you'll see that in the backup documentation, that we actually have a letter this time from FAA saying, yep, you're good to go. If you want to do it again in a subsequent year, you have to ask and get another letter. So it's just adding, before the person who is in that, that position would just send an email, or we'd have a phone call, and they'd say, yep, sounds good, you're following all the rules, you're good to go. And typically what happens when a new person comes into one of these FAA positions is they're a little bit more strict until they figure out where, where they can have a, a little bit of judgment there. So we're in the strict phase right now, but that's fine. We have the letter to allow us to go forward, and this is a great partnership with the community college to get more people into the workforce with the commercial driver's licenses.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ann?
Allison, I didn't see in the lease agreement reference to the fact that any graduates of the course are required to apply for open CDL positions in Sanford. Can we add that?
That could be a pretty good one in there.
That was a good one. Steve, any comments?
They, they can drive for us all winter long and practice their skills, and yeah, it would be great.
It was perfect. Okay, can I have a motion, please? Jonathan?
Approve.
Nate?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much.
The next, a consideration of a contract extension between CA Plant and Sons of Springvale, Maine for Westside Plowing Services for the City of Sanford, and Matt.
Yeah, Matt, Matt Hill is with us, he's on the phone.
It's not very clear.
I'm on the road. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can now.
Okay, great. I'm sorry about that, I had to run, pick up our kiddo from art class. So I'd like to present a proposal for contract extension with CA Plant, who's currently both our east side and west side plow contractor. They've been doing a great job for a number of years, and we've got proposed a three-year extension. The first year is, is a sizable increase of about 10%, but then years two and three are back down to like 1.75% escalator each of those subsequent years. We have previously gone out for other bids for plowing, and just have historically not have had much success. Plus, we have a local contractor who's doing a good job. So the department recommends extending the contract with CA Plant for the next three years.
Bob?
You ready for a motion?
Oh, sure. Yes, perfect. Go ahead.
Move, we approve the contract extension with CA Plant and Sons of Springvale, Maine.
Pete?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you, Matt. All right.
Thank you.
The next, in order to appoint Nicholas Galant as City of Sanford Code Enforcement Officer, beginning December 20th, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. And, okay, I think is, I thought this part had to be Jamie and the next part Ian, but can we do everything under Ian? Okay, go ahead.
We just thought we would. I spoke with Jamie before, first. My name's Ian Halsey, I'm the Director of Community Development, and this is Nick Galant. He's our recent hire as a code enforcement officer, and you're appointing him tonight, and the next item is as a constable. He's going to start off in the housing safe, excuse me, in the land bank office. He's right now processing checks and helping in the office and getting ready to start his code enforcement office, or duties, so.
And you told him he has to come to all of these meetings, be present all of the time? Only kidding.
Oh, no, I, I said that only sometimes.
Yeah.
We tried to get him on the agenda earlier as possible, but we couldn't fit him. It's a pretty short agenda anyways.
Yeah, this is a short one. All right, so can I, we're going to do just the first part, and then we'll read the second part and vote on the second part, too. So this one would be a motion for the code enforcement officer, that part. So can I have a motion? Maura?
I'll make a motion to appoint Nicholas Galant as the City of Sanford Code Enforcement Officer for the period beginning December 20th, 2023, and ending on June 30th, 2024. We all know these are annual appointments, that's why it's so short.
Ann, second?
Ann, I'll second that.
All those in favor? Thank you. And in order to appoint Nicholas Galant as constable for the period beginning December 20th, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, be it further ordered that this appointment is empowered to enforce civil violations of city code, including any amendments made or any emergency ordinances that are approved and adopted by the City Council order, and is empowered to serve civil summons for violations of the said city code. Be it further ordered that this appointment is not allowed to carry a firearm concealed or unconcealed in the presence of duties or make arrests. Can I have a motion, please? And, and you can just say, so move by what I just read.
I'll make a motion to appoint Nicholas Galant as constable for a period beginning December 20th, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Ann?
Ann, I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right, thank you. Thank you very much, and congratulations and welcome on board.
Thank you.
All right. In order to approve the new rail trail linear park policy as presented, Brady, yeah, there's Brady.
I'm here. Do you want to do this like we did at Property Sub where we run down just one at a time, or do you want me just to read it?
I think, has everybody read it? Could he just read the whole thing, and then if there's any questions? Okay, why don't you just read the whole thing?
Already.
It's not, it's not that long.
This is the Sanford-Springvale Rail Trail Park Management Policies and Procedures. The linear park is supervised and managed by the Sanford Parks and Recreation Department. It is also part of the city trail system. Number one, there are no motorized vehicles allowed except for e-bikes, motorized wheelchairs, and from December 1st to April 1st each year, snowmobiles, and that will be dependent on snow cover. The Parks and Recreation Department may grant specific exceptions. Number two, gates must be kept clear for maintenance and emergency access. The police and fire may access at any time as needed. Number three, partying, rowdy gatherings, consuming alcohol, smoking are not allowed on the trail or in trailhead parking areas. Number four, fires are prohibited. Number five, firearms must follow the main state law within the width of the right-of-way, and the law is right there. And we'll get this printed on the signs once it is approved. Number six, the linear park is carry and carry out. Please respect the linear park by keeping it clean and picking up and removing dog waste and trash. Number seven, access points to the park are only those authorized by the Parks and Recreation Department. Number eight, landowners with abutting property on both sides of the linear park or by landowner permission may cross with motorized vehicles. And then we threw some addendums in here. A, they must let the Parks and Recreation Department know and request approval. B, they must maintain the trail in good condition after the work is complete and make the trail in the same condition or better prior to the work they did. And three, they need to replant trees, and however many trees that they cut, they need to replant on the city property. And number nine, the linear park and trailheads remain closed from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, and parking overnight at the trailheads must be requested through the Parks and Rec Department.
Thank you. Maura?
A couple of logistical things. It does not affect, you know, overall, but can you clean up Section 5 on the numbering? Do you see all the problems you have there? A, 1-1, A, and then 2A, and do you see that, Brady? Just clean it up.
Yeah, that was just copy and paste from the state website, but I can, I can clean that up.
What it did, it created, when you did that, it created a, it column within, it created a column within Word at the same time. And the other thing is, I would really love to see trash before dog waste, because it makes, it look like it's the trash from a dog and the waste from a dog. If you put trash first, it kind of separates. Do you see what I'm saying? And that's, and other than that, I was part of the discussion that changed some of this, so I'd love to hear from other councillors what their thoughts are.
Okay, thank you. Jonathan?
So a couple of things. The firearm section is only for a paved way, which is specifically for paved ways, so this would be right off the, the road itself, not the trail. So none of these sections are really applicable, according to state law, and I think I would move that they get removed for this.
I'm, I guess I'm confused at what part you're talking about.
A paved way, a trail would be considered a paved way, gravel is a pave.
Not according to the main state website definitions.
So we need some clarity on all of this.
So that needs to go away.
We have to deal with the firearm issue, because we can't have people doing firearms in areas.
Well, it could be, you know, that's a game warden issue.
There are hunters out there all the time, and this is, this is not.
They can hunt.
They can hunt. This is, this is like, okay, follow, make sure to follow the main rules when you're hunting. I see hunters out all the time.
Right, but this is not a road. It's, it's a railroad track. So it's not, it's not a paved road.
Hold on one moment, Steve.
So it doesn't cover under main law.
Right, so the intent of this was to adopt standards not dissimilar from the state law that's quoted here, preventing you to shoot from a paved way or shooting across a paved way. So if you take paved way out, replace that with, with the right-of-way, that's where the applicable nature of this is. So you can't shoot from the right-of-way, you can't shoot across the right-of-way by either a firearm and/or archery equipment. That was the intent to be adopted. To preserve the safe nature of, of the trail, not to preclude hunting, you can use the, the trail to access your hunting grounds, go on either side of the trail and, and perfect your hunting practices, but you can't shoot from the width of right-of-way or shoot across the width of right-of-way.
So what's the wording that they would have to change here?
You would remove paved way and replace it with right-of-way. That was the intent.
Okay, it's like, as in number, line five, when they had right-of-way. So then on number one, it needs to have that changed. Number two, the same, number three, so all those paved way needs to say right-of-way.
Correct.
All right. Okay.
And I think it shouldn't point to the state law, it should point to a local city ordinance, because state law is not, this isn't covering state law, state law is a different definition. So that's, that's what I had on that. The other is, is if.
Hold on a second, because we've got to, we'll discuss that.
Sure.
I just want to clarify, Steve, I guess in our meetings, I didn't see the problem with stating, so what would the wording of that have to be? Firearms must follow main state law within the width of the right-of-way.
So firearms must, must follow, firearms must follow this, this guidance within the width of right-of-way, and then just remove Section 11208, just simply strike that out and strike all of the ending references at each, at each of the sub-paragraphs.
Okay. All right. Jonathan, does that settle that part? Because that'll be struck, we'll take that out now.
Yeah, that basically puts it in within 10 feet of the edge of the right-of-way.
Yep.
Is that correct?
The, the reason that was brought forward, Jonathan, to, to reference the state law was rather than creating new or different standards, adopt the same type of standards for this width of right-of-way that the state uses for paved ways, rather than trying to recreate the wheel. So that was, that was the.
Yeah, as long as, I think as long as we clean it up so that it.
We were very clear in the meeting, we wanted hunters to be allowed to continue to use the right-of-way, but safely.
Yeah, yeah. I want, I want people to be able to use it, but yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're out there all the time. It's a great way to get.
Right off the trail.
It's a great way to get to some of those areas.
Okay.
Absolutely, and that was, that was in the subcommittee meeting, that was very important.
Yeah, I just think it needs to be cleaned up a little bit.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Good point.
And then I had one other.
Go ahead.
Point, if we're ready for that. If a landowner has property on both sides of the trail, I really think that they should be able to access both of their property pieces without requesting permission. That's how I, I read here.
And I thought we talked about that being okay. I thought it was just for having vehicles going over to harvest some of the trees.
This would be Section 8?
So the, what, my memory serves on the subcommittee meeting, as we did talk about this, but if they're going to use their vehicle to cross the rail trail, that is when they need to request permission, just like any other group that's utilizing an ATV or something to go do some trail work, just like we've had a couple of requests come through, especially after the storm yesterday. That's where that comes in. So it doesn't, just doesn't allow anybody to, to access crossing city property and potentially damaging the rail trail without our knowledge.
So it's really, it's probably more informative, because you, you're probably going to give them permission, right? So it's.
I don't think I've denied anybody yet.
Yeah.
Well, and that's fine, but I, I think that landowners have a right of access to their property across a right-of-way that's through their property, so I really don't think that they.
I think it makes a difference that this is a linear park. So this is a park, so that would, Steve?
It depends on who owns the right-of-way. So I've dealt with rail trails all around the state. When you look at the, when certain trail, where do I say? Railroad right-of-ways are taking over as trail systems, there are those that, I'm trying to come up with the right term, Nate, you have, when the property was originally taken by the railroads. You have, when the property was originally taken by the railroads, some of those properties were taken such that they revert back to a time of discontinuance from use as a rail. It reverts back to half the width of the right-of-way because we've had a lot of issues around that in the state, that there, there's a segment that had reversionary rights to it and it just destroyed the entire use of the trail because that landowner didn't, they had property on both sides, didn't want it. That's not the case with this. The city owns the width of right-of-way. So there wasn't any reversionary rights to go back to these abutting property owners. So they need to come to us to ask permission even before this being part of the linear park system in order to access their property using this city-owned right-of-way. They didn't retain any rights to the right-of-way that was created by this railroad crossing.
Okay.
So if you own property on both sides and you continuously using a motorized vehicle to cross from one side to the other, it obviously can cause damage to the shoulders and such and that, so you need to ask permission. Stored, anytime somebody has been logging that has property in there and needed to use the width of right-of-way to access that, notice is made, permission is granted, and they, they clean their activity up at the end of that process. We work with them on the timing. Typically, logging occurs after the ground's frozen in the winter time to minimize the damage to the right-of-way.
Jonathan?
Thank you. So what you're saying is the landowners have no legal right-of-way across the park right-of-way?
Well, I, I think I was as clear as I could be on that. There's reversionary rights when property is taken by the rail lines and there is non-reversionary rights. City owns this, this right-of-way. Didn't revert back. Otherwise, they wouldn't need to ask us permission to utilize the right-of-way.
Right, okay. Thank you.
And it sounds like the, the purpose of this was so that if there was any damage, you know who was doing it and then they have to just go fix it. They're not going to be denied to do it. It just, you get enough, put the back how it was. It kind of keeps a record of knowing who's, who's doing what. Any other questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Maura?
I'd like to make a motion that this be approved based on the comments we've made this evening with the cleaning up language. You know, and Steve can work with you to clean up, in particular, the legal, the state, main state law. That's my motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a?
Madam Mayor, may I speak?
After, let, finish, finish the.
We have to finish this, please. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jonathan? Now discussion. So Diane?
Yes, I have several comments, if I may, Madam Mayor. On December 10th, December 12th, 2012, I addressed the council about accessing railroad bed in regards to my property, cleaning down trees, down everything, and having access to the rear of my property. I have been going to these meetings, the Trails Committee, and I heard the comments of the members talking about a landlocking, the butters. Yet, there is no notice to any of the butters to address any of these comments. I just happened to be getting attention and went to these meetings. I'd like to know if the city is going to honor that request that was approved by the council back in 2012 because it was also stated that if I did any damage to the trail, that I would fix it. That was the first part of it. The second part was in regards to Counselor Martell's comments and in regards to the city ordinance about going the width of the right-of-way, but doesn't that also include the length? Because we have that ordinance talking about three-quarters of a mile. The other comment I would like to make, it's just a general comment, having gone to some of these meetings, the one thing that very worries me the most is that back in 2000, I believe it was 21, 22, we had 12 people on the Trail Committee Task Force. Yet, one person, one person from the Trails Committee made up these rules that had been looked at by subcommittee. I don't want, I don't think it's fair that one person makes up an ordinance and doesn't include other people within the areas that this is governing. Not, like I said before, not one landowner was asked to contribute any comments to these, these rules. And I think that is wrong. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Diane. Any comments? Jonathan?
Diane, and maybe I'm not supposed to reference people calling in, but I don't know if you're on speakerphone, but it's.
It's hard to understand.
Hard to understand what you said. So I'm hoping somebody else can interpret the things you referenced as far as an older meeting and trees is all I caught. So I don't know if anybody has any history on that.
Well, some of the.
Would you like to repeat it?
No. You don't have a good sound.
Anything that was done years ago by a council years ago, we can't be held accountable if it wasn't put into an official ordinance. So this is what we're looking at now. We're not looking at something else. And this thing, the trails weren't a linear park years ago. So standards have changed and what we're looking at has changed from years ago. So I'm not quite sure why would we go back to years ago? And this group, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe there were a lot of us participating in creating this document. And we had a lot of discussions and went back multiple times to be corrected. And now it's, we're even correcting it more thanks to Jonathan pointing out a few things. So I think we probably did due diligence on this. So we've got a first, we've got a motion, and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much. All right.
Did you do the firearms highlight?
Yeah, I've got that.
He had, he had a nice map that showed, if anybody wants to look it up.
Yeah, I put, I had that up on the screen, then, then took it down here, but.
Okay. All right. So now we're on to council member comments and we aren't going to see each other, actually, some of you will see me with my cinnamon rolls if I ever get my oven back and get electricity. Other than that, they are not going to be Christmas cinnamon rolls.
New Year's?
They're going to be New Year's cinnamon rolls.
Excellent.
That are going to come out. So I will be finding you guys. So that's my comment under that. So any other comments from people? Jonathan?
I just want to say I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year if we don't see people before then.
Thank you. Pete?
Yeah, to all the parents out there, if their kids freak out sitting on Santa's lap, enjoy it. They're supposed to. It's okay. Someday, they may grow up and be a city counselor. So have fun, take pictures and enjoy it.
Yes, Grandpa.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, let, let me point out, we are having kids sit on a stranger's lap and saying it's okay.
And they know their name.
And, and, and sat, and then they cry and we wonder why. Something wrong with that picture. All right, any other comments? Ann?
Well, I, I think this is now the time when we sing our, do our Christmas caroling for the public, isn't it? And the flash mob dance we have planned?
I got a note, I got a note.
Oh, no. Okay. I'll, I'll also wish everybody a Merry Christmas. And then as a reminder, I'm lucky to be out of town with my family and so I won't be at any council meetings until the Tuesday, January 16th meeting.
All right, thank you, Ann. Any other comments? Bob?
Well, of course, I have to say Merry Christmas, season's greetings and everything else to everybody out there. I hope, and Happy New Year. And hope you and your family have a fun, safe holiday.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. And remember, this next item is future agenda items, so do not blame me when these meetings go long. So, do you guys have any? And remember, you can always email me too if there are some that you think about later on. So any one for a suggestion now? Ann?
Well, since I'm not going to be here. And I don't know if it needs to be an agenda item, but an initial conversation from the Public Safety Subcommittee meeting, maybe with Parks and Rec and Chief Anderson or Property Sub about what it would look like over time to invest in the barriers that he recommended. And Steve, you weren't able to be at that meeting, but they're the metal, really much more sturdy barriers. And Chief was really recommending, we look at our highest traffic areas during parades and maybe invest slowly over time in protecting those areas versus the barricades we have currently, which people and kids in particular can easily get underneath. So just those conversations.
And he had pictures that he showed us at the subcommittee. They were pretty good. All right. Anything else? Maura?
And I know I've mentioned this to both you and Steve and Larissa, but I'd love to see a conversation after the homeless meeting, Ann and I were able to talk to a woman who, from the school department, who deals with the current mental health issues with our, with our kids in the, in all the schools. And we mentioned that it would be great to have some sort of a workshop so that we can have a better grasp of the extent of some of the issues they're dealing with as we're entering budget season, because I think some of their ask is going to, a lot of their ask is going to be trying to maintain as many of those ESR positions as they can to continue to help the students in the, in the schools.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I asked us to look at an ordinance, like all the communities around us are starting to do, about flavored vaping. And I don't know if I used the right term for that, but it's become a very big issue at our high school and many other schools, interfering in the educational process. So it was a, it sounded like the flavored vaping was a way to start it out for people to stop cigarette smoking, helping them, and instead I think it's just causing its own set of issues. So we need to take a look at what's going on in communities around us. And so that's what I wanted on the agenda, something about that. Go ahead, Ann.
It's, it's the pods, flavored pods.
Flavored pods.
Do they smoke them or?
And then it goes in the vape.
In the vape machine thing? Okay. We're so good at this.
Yeah, they've been flushed out of the toilet. A lot of damage in the parks, all the.
I was letting the mayor know, I feel like I was in on the ground with this problem because the Juul was coming into stores at the time, I still owned the store on High Street. And I watched the whole suing of Juul and Juul starting to pull back on flavors and then all the competitors instead filling that void that Juul was walking away from and, and it just got worse so quickly.
So, let me clear up, Juul, they, they used vitamin E as a thinner, which destroyed people's lungs and caused popcorn lungs. So there are other companies that come in with their scientists and said they had something and then they perfected it for nicotine and that's what that was.
Right, it really, it was, it was weird to watch still being a store owner and realizing you were selling, now I sit there and going, damn it, I was selling that, you know? And it's really, it's upsetting to see how far it's come.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, for those people, we are going to be having a meeting December 28th at 10:00 AM and that's, I think, that would be Maura, Bob and me. And Steve will be at that for committees for people to be on.
Like paying for?
And I think that's all, yeah, and I think that's all, I think it's closed now.